All right, welcome to the Lake Mills City Council Meeting of January 3rd, 2023. Happy New Year. Uh, let's have a roll call, please.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can everyone please rise and join us for Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag...
To the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic of which we're sworn in. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in...
All right. Correction and/or approval of City Council Work Session Minutes of December 15th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes from December 15th, 2022.
I'll second. Whoops. I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any further discussion? Uh, CNN, please raise your hand. Steve, give us an aye.
Aye.
It's five-oh. Motion passes. Correspondence. Steve, we'll start with you out in online world.
Um, I just had two. I, uh, received the letter from Tom, which I believe everybody else did about the EMS and the township. And then I had one phone call about garbage pickup where, um, garbage pickup had been delayed last week and we had one frustrated resident and I left Drake a message on that one. That's all I had.
Thank you. Ms. Curler?
Uh, I just had the email from Chairman Beagle from the Town of Lake Mills that I think everyone received.
Okay, I had the same. Mrs. Bishop?
I also had an EMS email as well.
Okay. Ms. Quidnow?
Same as everyone else.
All right. I think everybody was celebrating the holidays, so not as active. So let's go into, uh, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So, public comment is open? Is there any comments tonight?
Good evening. My name is Hope Ozeidek. I live at W-8357 Cedar Lane in the town of Lake Mills. Um, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I would really like to encourage you guys, um, to continue your search for what the public wants for Sandy Beach. I was encouraged to read the results of the survey online and happy that you have used that tool in order to develop some kind of feeling for how things are going to go down there. Um, after thinking about it again, I'm going to encourage you to, again, entertain the idea of some kind of a master planning exercise. I think there are so many questions of the use of the area and so many facets that are already there and existing at Sandy Beach that need to be reexamined. Uh, one of the things that I feel real strongly about right now is we, uh, in, we embarked on a archaeological survey in order to be able to garner funds from the state of Wisconsin for the boat launch that was installed down there. A great deal of cash was spent on that. Uh, it happened sort of during COVID. I don't think that anybody knows the results. I know there are printed results, but I think it's time that we had some kind of a public meeting about those results and that we would decide as a community how we would like to honor the history of that area. I think that would be another good place to start. Um, I encourage, um, all the public to be involved and read what has come of the study that you've done on food service. And I think that is a great step and just one of the first steps that needs to happen. I thank you for your time tonight and I'll look forward to the rest of the results and your discussion of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. Any questions? All right. So Mrs. Bishop just, uh, stepped away. She's going to join us online from a room next door, so, uh, so we still have, uh, five people in, in the meeting here, so. Which is more than warm, so we're good. Any, uh, did I ask if there was any questions for Hope? Okay, we're good there. Any other public comment from, uh, people present tonight? How about, uh, people online? Is there any public comment? Going once for people online if they want to make a public comment? Twice? All right, public comment is now closed. Thank you. Let's move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Daly?
Unless there are any questions, uh, for me this evening, I don't, I have, uh, nothing specific to report to you at this time.
Any questions? All right, let's move on to council business. The first item on our agenda is appointment of Deputy Clerk. Misty, can you read the motion, please?
City Council Motion 23-1-1-1: Confirmation of City Manager Appointment of Deputy Clerk.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Motion 23-1-1-1: Appointing Madison Myers as Deputy City Clerk.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff comment?
Uh, with your permission, I'd like to invite, uh, Ms. Myers to introduce herself and provide a little bit of background, um, uh, to the city council.
Hello. My name is Madison. Um, I'm originally from the Lake Geneva area. Um, and I recently attended and graduated from UW Whitewater with a degree in political science and a minor in sociology. Um, I moved to Lake Mills this summer with my husband, Isaac. Um, while I was attending UW Whitewater, I, uh, held a couple of positions that, um, I felt were relevant to this role. So the first was I served as the university's policy intern. Uh, so over the summer, I worked with administrators and faculty members to develop and edit policies for the university, um, as well as creating a digital online catalog and website page, uh, to go along with it so that students and faculty members could access policies. And then more recently, I served as the clerk for the Whitewater student government, um, which was a lot of tasks that were similar to this role, a lot of, uh, preparing agendas and minutes and packets, stuff like that. I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
You can be seated now. Any other questions or comments? All right, CNN, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero. And can I just say I'm really excited to have Madison joining the city of Lake Mills in our team? Um, I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you. Congratulations. Welcome. All right, next is Item B, which is Resolution 21-23-1. Let me restate that. Resolution 23-1: City Manager Compensation. Misty, can you read that resolution, please?
Resolution 23-1: City Manager Compensation.
That sounded about the same as what I just said. All right. Thank you, Misty. That was a pretty simple one, huh?
Um, as the council is aware, um, you are required by our, uh, charter ordinance to adopt, oh, actually not by the charter ordinance itself, um, by, uh, previous resolution to adopt a resolution annually with regard to the city manager's compensation. Um, this is in, in accord with the budget that has been adopted, um, in accord with the agreement, the, uh, um, uh, employment agreement that was executed at the time of, uh, Mr. Daly's hire. Um, so I, if you have any questions, I'm definitely willing to address those. Otherwise, uh, adopting this resolution is appropriate.
Is there any questions or comments? All right, to move forward, I need a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 23-1: City Manager Compensation.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields. Again, any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed five-zero.
Thank you. Next is the, uh, presentation and discussion on Sandy Beach Food Service Options and Survey Results. So, let's just turn that right over to staff and, uh, get going on this.
Okay. Um, Shahir is online. He was, uh, um, the, the main staff contact for, uh, the administration of the survey and is available, is available tonight. He's going to provide us a presentation on the, the survey results. Uh, the report from UW River Falls Survey Center is, uh, included in your packet, uh, for reference. Um, but I will now turn it over to, uh, the UW River Falls staff, uh, for the presentation.
Thank you, Drake. Um, if I share my screen, is everyone able to view the slides?
I, I believe we will be able to, yes. Yep, we got it.
Perfect. All right. Uh, well, first of all, thank you for having me, folks. Great to be here. Um, so I'm, I was asked to present the results of the Lake Mills Sandy Beach Survey. Uh, before I dive into that, let me just say that, uh, this project, uh, would not have been successfully completed without the help of Steve Shmueluski, who's, uh, online here, and also Drake Mills. Both of these guys provided feedback throughout the process and helped us distribute the survey, which led to, uh, uh, the response rate that we got. So, um, with that, let me, uh, just jump into this. So, I'm Shahir Bernie. I am, uh, the Director of the Survey Research Center. I'm also faculty in the Department of Agricultural Economics at UW River Falls and I teach our accounting and finance courses. So I have a split appointment, fifty percent of the SRC, fifty percent is faculty in the department. Um, let me also quickly introduce the Survey Research Center. We are an independent research department at the University of Wisconsin River Falls. Uh, we've been around for quite some time, over thirty years. Uh, and we have basically provided the same service for, uh, since, since nineteen ninety. In addition, our mission hasn't changed, which is to provide high-quality and affordable survey services to support community development, academic research, and the food and agricultural industry. And, uh, you know, to add on to that, uh, our mission is to strengthen, uh, strengthen our local communities. So we only take on projects that have some sort of community development aspect to it or generate some sort of public good. In other words, we don't do surveys for large corporations, for example. We have a zero-margin policy. We are obviously affiliated with a public university. So as a result of that, we conduct all surveys at cost. Um, so, you know, and that also aligns with our mission of providing services to organizations and clients that otherwise may not be able to afford survey services. So, uh, and, you know, we're, as a result of that, we, we do everything at cost and, uh, we are also supported by the university financially, because of which we are the lowest-cost, um, most affordable survey slash research center in the upper Midwest and one of the lowest-cost survey centers throughout the country. So that's, uh, that's the SRC. Now, this is, uh, not a whodunit or a mystery novel, so I'm not going to keep you waiting for the final results. I'm going to start off with what the key findings are and then I will present survey results to back up those, those findings.
Before we get started here, can, can I double-check and make sure everybody can hear you okay?
Could be a little...
Can we turn it up a little bit? Okay, great. You can move on now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, finding number one, um, there is unambiguous widespread support for the development of a food service facility at Sandy Beach. Uh, not only that, but certain segments of the population have, uh, support this more strongly than others, in particular, young adults, uh, residents in, in the age group eighteen to thirty-four more strongly support the food service relative to older residents, uh, age eighty, thirty-five plus. Uh, finding number two, most residents of the city are willing to accommodate a one-time increase in property taxes to fund the facility. So not only do they support the development of the facility, they are willing to pay for it. The most popular food service option, uh, is a casual restaurant as opposed to a concession stand or a, uh, a, a, a food truck, uh, or an upscale restaurant. And finally, according to residents, the facility should, facility should provide year-round service as opposed to seasonal, both indoor and outdoor seating options relative to indoor-only or outdoor-only. And, uh, residents would like the facility to not have a banquet room. And I'll talk about this last one in more detail in a little bit. So, these are the key findings. Uh, let me start with the methodology first and then we'll talk about each, uh, survey results question by question. Um, also note that, uh, all of the slides are numbered, so in the bottom right, you'll see the slide number. At the end, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions if you want to, uh, refer back to a slide. It will be helpful if you note down their slide number. All right, so we conducted two surveys. Um, the first one was the random sample survey and then an open access survey. The random sample survey was our original plan and, uh, it was administered to, uh, just over two thousand randomly selected residents of the city of Lake Mills and the surrounding regions. And so those surrounding regions included, um, Town of Lake Mills, Town of Astalan, and the Town of Milford. And so we took a random sample of close to, to, about twenty-two hundred residents of these areas and they received the online survey. Data was collected, uh, over a sixteen-day period, sixteen-seventeen, something in that ballpark, between October twenty-sixth and November eleventh. And, uh, we collected a total of three hundred and twenty-five responses from the survey that represents a fifteen percent response rate. Now, the purpose of the random sample survey was to, um, obtain least biased estimates. Any sample, uh, collected through a survey is going to be biased to some degree. But, uh, the beauty of randomization is that, uh, it allows us to construct the estimates with the lowest amount of bias with, uh, a very small amount of responses. So for example, if you want to know what the perception of, um, close to eight thousand residents of the area, uh, is, we don't have, actually have to survey all of them. We can take a sample of residents that is representative of the population and as long as we have randomized it, we can develop estimates that are representative of the population. So the random sample survey provides us those estimates that have, have the lowest amount of bias. The challenge we ran into with the random sample survey was, uh, residents, um, feel quite strongly about this issue and they shared the fact that the city is doing a survey with their neighbors and friends and others in their social network, which led others to ask the question, why did I not receive the survey? And so to address that and give everyone the equal opportunity to express their opinion, we launched another survey at the end of the random sample survey, recalling that the open access survey. Basically, we created a duplicate version of the random sample survey, uh, generated an, an open access link and that link was promoted by the city. Anyone with a link could then take the survey. This was launched right after the random sample survey, so November eleventh, and it was live until November twenty-third. We collected a total of five hundred and forty-eight responses from the o-open access survey. Now, um, the challenge with providing an open link to everyone, of course, is only certain, uh, demographics or certain types of, uh, residents are going to respond to it and certain types of residents, residents will not be able to respond to it based on a host of socioeconomic factors. Uh, and so these estimates are invariably going to be more biased. However, they are based on a broader population, so they're based on more i-input from a greater percentage of the population. And as a result of that, uh, it is useful to consider these as well. So these were the two surveys. Um, in addition, we calculated the differences between residents in different demographic groups. Uh, four demographic groups were considered here. Uh, the first one is, uh, our group of seniors. These are residents of age sixty-five and over. Obviously, uh, people in that age group have preferences that are vastly different from people in other age groups, so it is important to, uh, decipher what this demographic, uh, uh, is thinking. We also looked at young adults that are residents in, uh, the age group eighteen to thirty-four. Uh, these are the young people and are very likely going to be the longest-term resident, residence of this, of the area. And so, yeah, and they're also the residents that will likely patronize the food service facility for the longest period of time. So for that reason, it is really important to consider what they are thinking. We looked at households with, uh, three-plus members, three or more household members. And so this demographic likely includes households, uh, that include children. So two parents and children or some, some combination of that. And so very likely, more than two people in a household refers to a household, uh, households with children. And so of course, their, uh, preferences are going to be very different from those with households without children. Finally, we looked at the, uh, perception of the residents who, of the city of Lake Mills relative to other regions in our target area, such as the Town of Lake Mills, Astalan, uh, Milford. And I think we also got some responses from Waterloo. And so these are the four demographic groups we analyzed. Finally, we tested for the statistical significance of differences, uh, between these, of the responses of residents in these groups. And, uh, when we say statistical significance, if, if a difference is statistically significant, we have a lot of confidence that that difference, that estimate was obtained not by coincidence, not by chance, but is a, it is a real, uh, it is a real, uh, difference. Uh, for example, if we take, if we only take two residents in the region and one says yes to a question, the other says no to a question, obviously, we can't conclude that fifty percent of the population thinks yes and the other fifty percent thinks no. Uh, we need a certain, a minimum number of responses to be able to develop statistically valid estimates and statistical significance, uh, attempts to answer that question, is the estimate statistically valid or not? Okay, so, uh, in terms of the results, in the actual report that, uh, everyone has access to, I provide, uh, two sets of results. One is the result of the residents in the random sample. That's based on three twenty-five responses, as I mentioned. And the second set of results, which is, uh, juxtaposed with the random sample, are the results of the overall sample. And what we're calling the overall sample is really just the aggregation of the responses of the random sample and the open access survey. So we had three twenty-five in the random sample, five forty-eight in the open access survey. The, uh, results of the overall sample therefore are, uh, based on eight hundred and seventy-three responses, which is just the sum of the two. Um, because I mentioned some challenges with, uh, the overall sample or the open access survey that those estimates are more bi, more biased, in this presentation, I will only present the results of the random sample survey. That's going to be the primary, uh, result, I will, set of results that I will discuss. But, uh, where the results of the overall sample differ from the results of the random sample, I will mention that. Okay, so that, so that's how we're, uh, we're going to organize this. Um, in the report, of course, we have access to both, both sets of figures. Now, the good news is that for almost all of the questions, the results were fairly similar. The differences between the two samples was not statistically, were not statistically significant, so that gives us a lot of confidence about the accuracy of the, the estimates. And finally, we'll present the statistical significance of differences between the demograph, four demographic groups that I talked about. Well, uh, without further ado, let's, uh, dive into the survey results. The first section is overall support for food service. And, uh, there are two measures of this that we looked at. The first measure is based on the question, should food service be provided at Sandy Beach Park? And, uh, the X-axis are the survey, the response, the, the options to the question, which range from strongly disagree to strongly agree. Uh, the bars represent the proportion of responses, so the, the greater, uh, proportion of residents that selected a certain, certain respond, response, the, uh, larger the size of the bar or the longer the bar. So if we start at the left here, you will see that only ten percent of the residents said either strongly disagree or somewhat disagree. And ninety percent, the remaining ninety percent, either agreed that food service should be provided or they're on the fence. Only ten percent of residents said neither agree nor disagree and eighty percent said that food service should be provided. So that's a pretty, uh, pretty clear-cut result there that residents do have a strong preference for food service at Sandy Beach Park. Uh, like I said, only ten percent of residents disagree. I, I should also mention at this point that if there are any questions, uh, you will get a chance to ask questions at the end, but feel free to stop me in the middle if there's anything I can elaborate on. If you have a burning question, I'd be happy to answer that before I move on. So feel free to, uh, chime in if you, if you, if you'd like to. So that was the first question. Um, this table shows us the, uh, differences between demographic groups. And so the four columns here are the four demographic groups we talked about. Seniors, young adults, households with three-plus members, three or more members, and then the residents of the city of Lake Mills. The, uh, differences that are statistically significant and are therefore valid are shown in bold. And in this, from this table, you can see that in response to this question, uh, there was one difference that was statistically significant, that was young adults are fifteen percent more likely to agree that food service should be provided at Sandy Beach relative to older adults, uh, that is adults aged thirty-five and over. And so young adults have a much stronger preference. And so where does that fifteen percent come from? Um, it comes from the fact that ninety-four percent of, uh, residents who are young adults said yes or agree, somewhat or strongly to that, uh, question, and seventy-nine percent of older adults, um, agreed or strongly agreed. And so the difference between the two is fifteen percent. That's what that, uh, that's what we're calculating here. Also note that, uh, there aren't, that the differences in other demographic groups are pretty trivial and not statistically significant. Um, particularly, uh, important is the results regarding city of Lake Mills residents relative to other residents in the region. There's only a two-person difference between the two, which is not tangible by any means. The second question we asked was, uh, if we do provide food service at Sandy Beach, what is the change in your likelihood of visiting Sandy Beach? Are you more likely to visit or less likely to visit, or is there going to be no change? The, uh, responses range from decrease a lot to increase a lot. And again, just like the previous figure, the X-axis represents each response and the bars represent the proportion of residents, uh, that select with each response. Only one percent of residents said decrease somewhat and no residents said decrease a lot. There we go. Eighty-five percent of residents said their likelihood would increase somewhat or a lot and about thirty-nine said their, their likelihood of visiting Sandy Beach would increase a lot if food service is available there. And so again, pretty strong indication that residents do want, um, food service at Sandy Beach. There, I, I believe there were, uh, no statistically significant results, uh, here, so the preferences, the responses across demographic groups is pretty uniform. Types of food service. We said, um, okay, if, what type of food service should we provide? Uh, there's a lot going on in this graph, so let me, um, take it step by step. Um, we provided four options, uh, to the respondents. We said we could either have a food cart, which is a mobile facility, smaller, a limited menu of options. We could have a concession stand, which is, uh, you know, uh, provides a wider selection, but is still a small facility. We can have a casual restaurant or an upscale restaurant. And we asked our residents to, um, rank the four facilities, four options, from their first preference to their, uh, fourth preference. And so, um, the rows here... And so um the rows here, if you will, represent each option here, ranging from casual restaurant to upscale restaurant. And the bars all add up to a hundred percent. Uh, the dark green portion of the bars uh represent the proportion of residents who indicated that this would be their first choice. And then the lighter shades are second, third, and fourth choice and so on. So as you can see, it's pretty um unequivocal here that a casual restaurant is the most uh preferred among these four choices. Seventy percent of all respondents selected, well over in thirds, responded casual restaurant as their first choice. Um, and then I think only about one percent selected casual restaurant as their fourth, fourth choice. And then um concession stand came in second, and it's a distant second. Uh, only fifteen percent selected concession stand as their first choice. And then a whole lot of residents selected it as the second or third choice. Food cart is third and upscale restaurant is fourth. So it's a pretty unambiguous result, and you know, we, it it is rare that we ever see this sort of um uh segregation in the responses. And so I I think the residents have pretty clearly spoken that a casual restaurant would be their their stronger sp- preference. Um, the results of the overall sample are relatively similar here. If theirs interest, I can show the overall sample. If not, then I will move on and you can always come back to it in the uh, in the Q and A section. Um, there was one statistically significant result between demographic groups. So this table is similar to the last one where the four columns here um on the right are the four demographic groups, seniors, young adults, households with three-plus members, and the residents of city of Lake Mill, Lake Mills. Uh, the rows are the four options. The one s- statistically significant difference between demographic groups is that households with three-plus members, in other words, households, very likely households with children, are less likely to select, seven percent less likely to select upscale restaurant relative to households with one or two members as their first choice. So um to dive in, to disaggregate that a little more, uh, households with three or more members, only three percent of households with three or more members selected upscale restaurant as their first choice relative to ten percent of households with one or two members who said the same thing. No other difference is statistically significant, which is telling that uh i- in particular, if you look at the casual casual restaurant and concession stand options, there are no statistically significant results there, which means that the preferences across demographic groups is relatively uniform. Not only is a is casual restaurant the first choice for uh the uh most amount of residents in the sample, but if we look at seniors versus younger residents, younger adults versus older residents and so on, the same is true. We asked uh how frequently um the respondents uh residents would visit each type of food service if it was available. And um we see the same result here. The most visited facility would be a casual restaurant. About uh forty percent of residents said that they would visit, visit a casual restaurant at least eleven times a year or roughly once a month. So uh forty percent, pretty significant proportion there. Um, also note that the uh ranking here is a little different in terms of when we asked for the first choice. Here we're asking about frequency of views. Uh, food cart was third and upscale restaurant was fourth. In this case, in terms of frequency of views, an upscale restaurant is actually third and food card is fourth. So, but the difference is pretty marginal, uh, not significant enough to warrant um a a change in decision-making, um, particularly be- because these are the last two. Among statistically significant differences, again, we see the uh differences between households with three-plus members and households with one or two members. Um, two results are statistically significant in that column. Relative to households with one or two members, households with three or more members are A, eleven percent more likely to visit a concession stand at least once a year as opposed to never. Um, and nine percent less likely to visit a food cart once a year as opposed to never. And so households with three or more members have a stronger preference for a concession stand. In other words, would visit it more frequently um and would visit a uh food cart less frequently relative to smaller households. And again, no other results are statistically significant. Okay, we also asked about the attributes of the uh food service facility. Uh, first uh question in this section was regarding what uh the seasonality of the service. Should the food service facility provide seasonal service, year-round service, or does the resident have no preference? As you can see, about seventy-two percent of all respondents selected uh year-round service relative to seasonal or not having a preference. So it's pretty clear that residents do want um a food service facility with year-round service. And so this may also shed some light on why a food cart is ranked so low. Um, it, you know, those are typically not available in winter months because they have typically have outdoor seating. And there, there was no statistically significant difference between groups based on age, household members and residents. The second attribute we asked about was seating. Should the facility have indoor seating only, outdoor seating only, or should it have both indoor and outdoor seating? Again, there's a close to unanimous opinion here that the facility should have both indoor and outdoor seating in the summer months. Of course, we asked about the summer months only. And so residents want the facility to have both indoor and outdoor seating uh seating options in the summer. Senior residents are six percent more likely to want both indoor and outdoor seating relative to younger residents. So residents sixty-five and over have a stronger preference for both indoor and outdoor versus indoor only or outdoor only relative to residents aged six uh aged less than sixty-five years. The third attribute we talked about was um should the facility have a banquet venue or an event space, if you will? This was a little close. Um, forty-two percent of residents said yes and fifty-eight percent said no. Um, so even though it's close, nonetheless, the uh majority here says that it should not have a banquet venue. And uh interestingly, the result was pretty consistent across the overall sample as well. Those results are not shown here, but the estimates were relatively similar. So uh a majority of residents think that a banquet venue should not be included in the food service facility. Again, no others, no statistically significant differences between groups. Now, this is the uh probably one of the more important parts of this presentation, willingness to pay for food service facility. We asked residents uh if they would be willing to accommodate a one-time increase in their property taxes to fund the development of the facility. And um uh the options ra- uh range from uh no increase in property taxes to four-point-one percent or higher left to right. And as before, the bars represent the proportion of residents who selected each option. So uh first things first, thirty-six percent of residents said that they would not be willing to accommodate an increase in property taxes, which means that just under two-thirds of residents said that they would be willing to accommodate an increase in property taxes. Which is quite an encouraging result, that's about sixty uh four percent of residents is a pretty uh strong proportion there, who are saying that a property tax increase, a one-time property tax increase would be fine if it leads to the development of the facility. Over one-quarter, uh twenty-seven percent are willing to accept a property tax increase of more than one percent. So that's uh one-point-one to two, two-point-one to three, three-point-one to four, and four-point-one percent or higher. If we add up those last four bars, or the rightmost bars, you'll get twenty-seven percent. So over a quarter are willing to take uh accept more than a one percent increase in property taxes. Now, um, there's a lot going on in this graph. Uh, basically, this involved a little bit of data analysis. But uh what we did was, we took the the graph, the figure that I showed you just now, this one, that is the size of property tax increase residents would be willing to accommodate. And we disaggregated it into four parts, uh responses for each type of food service. And so the uh values on the X axis are the same. Uh, but uh for each option now, we have four bars. The green bar is for food cart for residents who selected food cart as their first choice. The red bar is for residents who selected a concession stand as their first choice. And then uh yellow bar is for casual restaurant and blue bar is for an upscale restaurant. So here we were digging deeper into um how how, how do residents who have a strong preference for one type of food service uh, what what do they think about the increase in property taxes? So there's a lot going on here. Let's take it step by step. Let's start with the um leftmost column or the leftmost option, which is no increase. And what this is telling us that is that residents who have uh a strong preference for a food cart or who ranked a food cart as their first choice, eighty-two percent of those red residents say that they would not be willing to accept an increase in property taxes. So even though they do want a food cart, they don't want their taxes to go up to fund that facility or or to fund that food service option. Uh, similarly, seventeen percent of residents, in fact, the lowest proportion of residents said yeah, they they would not be willing to accommodate an increase in taxes for a concession stand. In other words, eighty-three percent of these resident residents said that they would be willing to accommodate an increase in property taxes if it was for a concession stand. So there's a lot of, there's a high willingness to pay among residents who uh selected a concession stand as their first choice. Um, even though casual restaurant was the number one choice among residents, uh, what we're seeing here is residents who selected casual restaurant as their first choice do not have the highest willingness to pay. Thirty-seven percent said they would not be willing to pay. Uh, and then therefore sixty-three percent said that they would be willing to accommodate an increase in property taxes. And then twenty-nine percent said the same about an upscale restaurant. So that's what that uh no increase option is telling us. If we look at this figure on the other end, uh, we can see what uh which residents have a high willingness to pay for each facility. And as you can uh see that there are no green bars here, that means residents who selected food cart as their first choice uh are not willing to pay more than one percent in property taxes. Um, but we do see there's a high willingness to pay among uh people who selected concession stand, casual restaurant, upscale restaurant. And so based on these numbers, we know that um those who selected a concession stand as their first choice have the highest willingness to pay. And those who selected a food cart have the lowest willingness to pay. And of course, a casual restaurant, upscale restaurant are somewhere in the middle. We did a similar type of disaggregation. Uh, and we looked at restaurant uh uh residents who said uh that they would be uh that their likelihood of increasing Sandy Beach would increase a lot, increase somewhat, or would not change at all if food service was provided. And so again, the X values, X axis values are the same. They range from no increase to four-point-one percent or higher. And then the light green bar represents uh residents who said their likelihood would not change. The darker shades is somewhat increased and the darkest shade is increase a lot. As before, we'll start with the left side of this figure. As you can see, residents who said said in their likelihood would increase somewhat or increase by a lot, um, none of those residents selected no increase or zero-point-one to zero-point-five percent. Which means that uh residents who selected increase somewhat or increase a lot, these are residents who are most likely to visit Sandy Beach if food service is provided, are willing to pay more than five, zero-point-five percent in a one-time increase in property taxes. So that's a very encouraging result. That shows that residents who are most likely to visit do have a willingness to pay and they can, they're willing to pay at least a zero-point-six percent increase in property taxes. Um, and the reason I didn't include include a decrease somewhat or re- decrease by a lot is because there was only a handful. I think only one percent of the overall sample said that uh selected any of those two options. Another notable result uh from this figure is this uh middle range here, zero-point-six to one percent. Sixty-five percent, oh, uh, just under two-thirds of residents who said they would visit Sandy Beach a lot more uh or their likelihood would would increase by a lot if food services provided, said they would be willing to accommodate an increase in property taxes of up to one percent. Okay, so these are the residents who are very likely going to be the main patrons, the main consumer base of that food service facility if it is available. And uh they would be willing to uh accept a one person, up to a one percent increase in property taxes, sixty-five percent of those residents. Similarly, uh twenty-eight percent of residents who said increase somewhat basically selected the same option. So based on these results, we can conclude that residents who are somewhat or a lot more likely to visit the food service facility are willing to pay at least zero-point-six percent in property taxes. Um, and about two-thirds of residents who are most likely, that is, those who selected increase a lot, uh, are willing to pay no more than one percent um increase in property taxes. Okay, um, we um did sort of a retrospective analysis here. We asked respondents to let us know how frequently they visited Sandy Beach and the Sandbar Restaurant in the past when it was open. And so this figure eleven A shows us their visitorship of Sandy Beach in the past year. Uh, looks like it is quite, uh, visited quite well by residents. Exactly fifty percent of residents selected either five times or six or more times. So half of the sample, half of residents of the area visited Sandy Beach at least five years in the past year. I'm sorry, five times in the past year. Um, and forty-three percent of those visited six or more times. There were uh, there was uh, I think there were two actually, um, statistically significant differences between demographic groups here. The first one was senior residents are twenty-nine percent less likely to visit six, six or more times relative to younger residents. Uh, so residents aged uh less than sixty, younger than sixty-five are twenty-nine more, not twenty-nine percent more likely to visit than seniors. And also households with three or more members are thirty-six percent more likely to visit six or more times than household with, households with one or two members. So larger households uh visit Sandy Beach more frequently than smaller households, likely because they, there are children involved. And I can show you these results for the overall sample as well. Um, the visit, the frequency of visiting Sandy Beach was a little higher for the overall sample. Uh, fifty-two percent of residents said that they visit six or more times and fifty-eight percent overall said they visit five or more times. So um more visitors, when you look at a, the broader segment of the population, there's greater uh visitorship. We asked the same about uh the Sandbar Restaurant. We said, uh, how many times in a typical year did you visit the Sandbar Restaurant when it was open? Uh, the responses, options range from never to many times a year. And as you can see here, over one-third, well over one-third of residents uh indicated that they visit, visited the Sandbar Restaurant many times a year when it was open, thirty-eight percent. And uh also note that no one said that they never visited the Sandbar Restaurant when it was open. So in other words, there is a high demand for food service at this, at uh Sandy Beach. Uh, when the Sandbar Restaurant was open, um, a pretty tangible proportion of the population um frequented, pa- patronized the facility. Um, and if you add up a few times a year, many times a year, that's uh, that's about eighty-two percent of the overall sample, so pretty high number. In conclusion, um, food service facility would be well-received by residents of the area. I hope I've convinced you of that, of that by now. Based on multiple results in the survey, we see this uh, we see this conclusion. Um, facility will be patronized equally frequently by city of Lake Mills residents and those from outside of city of Lake Mills. So this was a somewhat surprising result for me, that um when we asked about uh how emphatic they are for the, of the, for the food service facility, how frequently they would visit, et cetera. There were, in very few cases, the, there were tangible differences between residents of city of Lake Mills and residents of the uh region outside of the city. So, you know, not only would it be uh well-received by residents of city of the city, but also uh the town of uh Lake Mills, ci- or town of Astalan, Milford, and Waterloo. So uh there, there are few differences between these two populations. Residents who are most likely to visit the facility are willing to accommodate a one-time property tax increase property tax increase of at least zero point six percent. So those who are actually going to patronize the facility can, uh, are willing to accept at least a zero point six percent increase in their property taxes. Uh, and two-thirds of those who are most likely to visit are willing to accept no more than a one percent increase in property taxes. A casual restaurant is unambiguously the most popular choice. And a concession stand, uh, is the second most popular choice, albeit by, uh, by a wide margin, it is the second choice. And finally, the facility should, should provide year-round service, indoor and outdoor seating, and should not have a banquet room. And the last one, again, it's a, it's close to middle, but fifty-eight percent of residents said that it should not have a banquet room, forty-two percent said that it should have a banquet room. And, uh, finally, that is it for the presentation. I'd love to take questions, but before I do, I wanna, um, give Steve Shumaluski a ti- a chance to chime in. Looks like he has a couple of questions for the council. So, uh, whenever, you know, Steve is done with his questions, then we can come back to the Q and A and I will take any questions from the audience. Steve, it's all yours.
Great, thank you, Shahir. Uh, as Shahir mentioned, my name is Steve Shumaluski and I work with University of Wisconsin-Madison's Division of Extension, the Extension Jefferson County Office. Work with Community Development Institute, have a part-time appointment. And I'm, uh, happy, uh, to be working with you on this project. So I just have two questions. I know this is all, um, pretty fresh and funny, just came out last week. You first had a chance to look at it and I'm sure you didn't have much of a chance to discuss it. But I'm, we're curious as what are some of your initial thoughts on the results? What stood out to you? And how, what might be some potential next steps to apply the findings?
Guess that's a question for council, does there? I mean, are we okay to comment on that at this point? Yeah, okay.
There's been no consensus by the council on next action, but yeah, you're definitely able to discuss and certainly able to discuss those topics.
Thank you. To me, it, it seemed pretty clear on a couple of things that, um, that the casual year-round outdoor service kind of stood out. Um, those, those three things are, I, I think would, would shape that facility and that site, uh, definitely in one direction. And, uh, was overwhelming, uh, the response on, on those three areas. So it, it seems to fit with, uh, with, with something that was existing before, the, the Sandbar, uh, except for the year-round. I guess the Sandbar was only seasonal, so this would be, uh, a, a move towards a year-round facility, but, but that's a, a good eye-opener. Any other thoughts or comments?
Mr. Waters?
Yes. Steve, Mr. Fields?
I'll chime in. Um, no, I was pleasantly surprised, uh, about how strong, not only the city, but the township residents were in favor of food service down there and casual. That was similar to where we were somewhat headed with the council in the past and some of our strategic planning with the, what our vision of Sandy Beach was to be, um, it was right in line with it. So it was a pleasant surprise.
Any other thoughts, comments? Yep.
This is Catherine Bishop. Um, one thing that stood out to me was the preference for both a concession stand and options for indoor and outdoor seating. When I think of concession stand, I think usually of a, a walk-up where you're outside and maybe the service personnel are inside and there's a window that you would walk up to to order. So that seemed to be a little bit, um, at opposite ends for me in terms of results and what people wanted.
Yes.
Oh, um, just a couple of things that struck me. Um, uh, thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation and for this analysis. Um, I wasn't at all surprised that, um, people who are not residents of the city of Lake Mills were equally interested in attending. I mean, I think it's just the, the nature of our, our broader community and the position of this property on the lake, you know, which is half, half surrounded, maybe more than half by town of Lake Mills. So that didn't set-
Yes.
Um, when looking at the sample and looking at the three plus for households, as a three-plus household myself, I can tell you that, um, there's quite a bit of frequency to Sandy Beach due to, um, if there are school-aged children who are in swimming lessons. So the amount of six plus could be slightly skewed if their child decided to participate in, uh, swimming lessons during the summer, which is around, um, about three weeks in, in July. Um, so that, that puts you, you know, that gives you six plus or more because you have to be there every single day for like ten days. But aside from that, none of the information really surprised me from this. I think it really is, um, similar to what we were already considering way back in the day when we first started talking about this. Um, and I think that first and second, I will say this, thank you, gentlemen, for all of the hard work that you and your teams did, um, reading through and, and building up the presentation for us to be able to understand it and for anyone to really be able to understand it. Um, so that, uh, that was just my only thing was the, the frequency piece, but that's it.
I did want to go back in and, uh, discuss the biases towards the link. Uh, that was a comment that was made about the open access link, uh, where there was five hundred and forty-eight respondents. How is that bias different than the random sample? Because I believe the random sample also had electronic element involved in, did it not?
Yes, I can, I can respond to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. In terms of, the, the random was a direct solicitation. They received an email directly in their inbox, an invitation to take, take the survey. Uh, whereas for the open sam- uh, open access, it was more, they had to be, and, uh, maybe Drake and Steve can, uh, clarify this a little more, but, uh, there, that survey was distributed through certain channels. So for example, the, the website or the, the newsletter and only people who have access to or are aware of these things, these communication channels and avail them would then receive the survey. And so, you know, if there's buzz in the community that there's a survey going on, some people who feel strongly about it would seek out the survey themselves. And others who are not so interested or maybe don't support the facility or, uh, or maybe do not oppose the facility all that much, they're somewhere in the middle, they would not have as much of an incentive to seek out the survey and spend, uh, ten minutes, invest ten minutes of their time taking the survey. So there's always that bias and we see this throughout the report where the results of the, uh, of the open access are almost always across all of the questions, more skewed towards, uh, greater support for the restaurant. And so that tells me that people who really, really want, uh, the, uh, the, their, the food service facility can take the survey. The other challenge is that with the open access survey, there is, uh, there is really no way to pre- prevent someone from taking the survey twice. For, for the random sample, because it's tied to their email, uh, you know, we, we know that we can sort of prevent them from taking it, but for the, for the open access, there, there's really no way they can take it multiple times. Uh, now that doesn't happen very much in our experience, but it is a possibility.
Okay, thanks for clearing that up. I, I was thinking that the bias was based on the electronic results, but it doesn't sound like that was it, so, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Well, one of the other questions that, uh, our presenters have asked us is, um, you know, what do we see as the next process steps? And that was actually a question I asked Drake on the phone earlier today. Um, I think one of the things I'm really pleased that we have this public input because I think as we reflected last summer and asked to have this survey conducted, we realized that perhaps we had done the RFP before we really knew what the community wanted. Um, and so now I think we're in a better position to move ahead with the next steps, but I think we've got multiple options as far as the folks who, um, the two, uh, proposals that we received, re-engaging with those people or maybe taking a different path, um, to continue to move forward. And this is also one phase of a bigger project with multiple phases. So I, I mean, I, I would really like to see, um, as our next step is getting some recommendations from staff on what should be the steps that we follow to bring this, you know, to move this phase forward, which is one of our priorities in our strategic plan. And then maybe a general picture of, you know, what are the steps that we want to do to move forward with the remaining phases and, you know, over a period of years probably.
Any other thoughts?
Are, are we on answering?
We can go anywhere.
Okay, cause then I had questions about the presentation, so I didn't know where we were.
Yeah, she kind of transitioned to next steps, but if you want to ask about the survey, go ahead.
Okay, um, let me get my thoughts back together. Um, my main question about the presentation and the survey was, do we have any concerns with double counting the responses when we aggregate the random survey with the open access survey?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, yeah, like I said, we can't prevent, uh, people from taking the survey twice. In the open access, the, the only way and, you know, what we, it's basically at their discretion, but, uh, we included a screener question at, at the beginning of the open access survey with said, uh, have you taken, have you received an invitation to take the survey from us in the past two weeks? Or, uh, and have you taken the survey before? If they answered yes to that question, then they would basically be, uh, you know, blocked out from the survey. But if they say no, then they can take the survey again. That, that is someone from the random sample who's already taken the survey can say no to that screener question and then fill out the open access survey as well.
So then a follow-up to that is why not then just take the two surveys, analyze the data from each of them separately and then compare those results as opposed to aggregating for the overall sample?
Yeah, certainly, that's, that's another way to do it. I guess the, the purpose of presenting the overall sample in aggregate was to give a, uh, uh, an idea of what the broader population is thinking. Um, so, you know, double counting, we do run into that, but it's, it's, it, I don't expect that it's going to make a major change in, uh, in, in the estimates. And that, that can be seen from the results as well, where most of the surveys, uh, most of the, uh, question, uh, responses are relatively similar. Uh, people in the overall sample are more emphatic about the food service facility, but the proportions are not twice as much or even fifty percent as much. It's within the margin, it's between plus minus five percent. And so, you know, that, that is certainly a concern and a valid one. Um, however, you know, if we just present the results of the, uh, of the, uh, open access survey, then they would be heavily skewed, heavily biased and, uh, you know, less informative than if we say that, okay, this is what the broader population, um, nine hundred responses, nine, nine hundred residents are thinking. That, that was the impetus behind this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I noted that at the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned something about, uh, the differences and that there might be a, with the open access have something to do with socioeconomic status of those who could take it. Do you, could you elaborate a little bit on that, please?
Yeah, that's a wonderful question. These are always issues that we tackle in pretty much all of the surveys that we do. We know that, uh, certain demographics are more likely to fill out surveys. For example, higher income individuals, uh, typically have more flexibility in their employment as opposed to so- someone working nine to five or someone working in a food service facility. Uh, they, they are less likely to respond to surveys, uh, especially when a monetary incentive is not involved, which was the case here. And so, you know, lower income folks are always underrepresented. Um, racial and ethnic minorities are always underrepresented. Um, you know, and on the other end, we find that, uh, seniors, the demographic of eight, sixty-five and over are always more likely to take surveys than others. And so randomization, uh, that's where that comes in handy. If we randomized, then basically we are sending it out to a representative, uh, uh, segment of the population. So for example, and I don't know if this number is correct, but if, uh, fifteen percent of the, or twenty percent of the residents of, uh, city of Lake Mills are seniors, then if we randomized, then basically that, that sample would include twenty percent of seniors. And so that's, that's one of the ways you get around it, but you know, there's, like I said at the beginning, every sample is biased to some degree. Randomization gives us the least biased sample.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the survey? All right, next steps. Ms. Curler did touch on the two proposals that we have on hand. If, we should probably, uh, reach out to Mr. Wilke, find out where the communication was left off there. It seems like we should, uh, re-engage. It feels like we, we owe them something for their proposals and we should re-engage, let them know the, the results of the survey and, uh, open up discussions from there. Any other thoughts, suggestions?
I'll certainly, um, I'll reach out to Mr. Wilke and also, and look for past correspondence and reach out to the individuals who submitted those, uh, proposals. And then we'll also begin having, um, internal staff, internal staff planning discussions on how, how best to present, um, next steps to the, to this body and see if we can continue to, to make progress on the item.
Any other thoughts, recommendations? Yes?
Yeah, we just, I guess, like us to think a little bit further about, um, I mean, as time goes on, about how we will continue to engage the community and how we will, um, look at this in a, in a, with a longer view, again, of the, the overall redevelopment of Sandy Beach. So I think, you know, maybe my, my personal opinion is that the prior council and our council, when we first got started, were just doing things one step at a time and never looking at, at the long view of, of, you know, what's our goal and what are the steps we're going to take to get there. And so I'm just hoping as the staff talk about this, that you can give us some kind of an outline of, of steps that we can follow over a period of time. And that will also help our community to see, well, here's how we're approaching this. And, you know, we've had, um, some suggestion to do a master plan or, you know, for the overall Sandy Beach process. There are, there is a multi-phase plan that was put together, uh, by one of our consultants. Some folks didn't feel that they had involvement in that. So, you know, how do we, how do we kind of restart all of this, given that of probably more time has passed than what anybody intended when they first started working on developing those phases? Um, but I, I hope that we can, you know, see some, maybe some options from staff as far as how we could continue to have public involvement and, and what steps you would recommend for us to move forward to get this phase moving and then to be looking at the future phases.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you for, uh, for your time tonight, Stephen Shahir. Um, it was a, a great survey, good feedback. Appreciate, uh, all the insight and, uh, I don't think too many of us are surprised by the feedback, but, uh, but it's always good to get that affirmation and, uh, understand what's, what's going on, so. All right, any other thoughts?
Thank you.
Thanks again. Thanks for joining us, uh, so shortly after the new year.
And, and thanks for having me, um, and thanks for using the Survey Research Center. Have a good evening, you all.
Thanks for working with us. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, so we'll discuss this more in the future and, um, decide that the next steps, if we need to do a workshop or something along those lines to, uh, to keep this thing moving forward and to talk about some of the things that Ms. Curler just, uh, just addressed as well. and to talk about some of the things that Ms. Curler just, just addressed as well. Recommendations for future agendas? Besides Sandy Beach? Anything tonight? Everyone's still in Christmas and New Year's mode. That's okay. All right, that's good. I told my wife it'd be an hour, so it was an hour and ten minutes. That's not too bad. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, Steve. Take care.